All right, and I would like to start by welcoming our newest trustee, Declan Dwyer McNulty, who is working his way onto Zoom so that anyone who's not here will be able to see him on the Zoom link. And for those who are in the building, just to clarify, we've moved the screen to our right. That's what stage right? So that the Panda camera can incorporate the screen. So for those of you who are used to looking left, now you look right. And we're going to start with the approval of minutes. So we have March 14th, Village Board meeting, March 10, 17, and 31 workshop meetings. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Declan. Any discussion or changes, edits? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you for waiving, Charlie. All right, the next order of business is an important one, which is our public hearing for the Village Budget for 2022-23. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you. I guess all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So the public hearing is open. This is the opportunity, we have posted the Village General Fund budget on the website, and this is an opportunity to to hear from the public. Any comments or questions? Clarifications? I don't know if we need to do any of our comments in public comment period, public hearing, Peter? I do have, I just would like, I guess I'll take this opportunity to share a couple of adjustments that I would like to make. Since I'm not hearing any public comment interest. On the general fund, I met with our treasurer and our controller, and we have discovered a couple things. One is that the line item A 1325.1 that we have labeled Controller is actually per New York State New York State Accounting Code list is actually Treasurer per serve, which means salary or payroll.
That's 1325.1.
Correct. So I am proposing that we change the label to be the proper label, to be Treasurer per serve, and that we put in that line the salary for the Treasurer, and that we add a second line, either 1325.4, which is Treasurer Contract Expense, or 1315.4, Controller Contract Expense, for Michelle, who is not an employee, so it's not correct to put her under a per serve line. I don't know, we've called her Controller. This 1315.4 is Comptroller. But then what I'm proposing is that we split out the Treasurer Salary from the Clerk line, which is 1410.1. Anybody have any preference as to whether we call Michelle a Treasurer or a Comptroller?
I prefer Comptroller.
I actually do, too. I think that reflects more of what she does. So, anybody else?
So what are the new numbers for the Comptroller then, 14?
So the new number for the Comptroller will be 1315.4. And so the 17,000 will go in there. And then 1325.1 will be renamed Treasurer per serve, and that will now be 27,500. And A 1410.1, which is Clerk per serve, will be 24,500. You'll note that that totals the same amount that I have under Clerk now. The big difference, the other piece that I've done is I've put 25% of the Treasurer Payroll and 80% of the Clerk payroll into the water budget. And that's a change. Again, it doesn't change the bottom line, it doesn't change the number. It just adjusts the line item. And in the water budget, hang on, let me find the right spot. In the water budget, there is 8310.1, which is Water Admin per serve. And we have split that into Highway, .1A, .1B. I propose to add .1C, which is Treasurer. And so the Clerk line will go down to 37,000, and the Treasurer line will go to, will be 9,000. Again, the number doesn't change, it's still 46,000 for those two. Sorry for the "in the weeds" detail, but it's important. And then the last piece is the sewer fund. We are still learning about how the sewer is going to operate, and I got some additional information today. So the line items within the sewer fund budget, I am proposing that we change, and there are a lot of them. So I'll just go down the line. On the expense line, Admin Personal Services, which is what per serve stands for, apparently. That line is going to go to zero.
Where are we, I'm sorry?
Sorry, we're on the sewer budget, sewer fund. On the expense side. So the first line item there is 1710.1, which is Admin Personal Services. That line item is going to go to zero. The admin contractual goes to 28,000. Unallocated insurance goes to zero. I will have a copy of this for all of you, you don't have to write it all down, but the driving force is, and I'll go straight to it, the grease trap pumping is a lot higher than I had anticipated, or at least we are anticipating it to be a lot higher. And so it was suggested that I should put $40,000 into that line. So I have, in order to put 40,000, I am making adjustments elsewhere. So the office supplies goes down to 100. Electrical costs, the 15,000, it's suggested that it's probably going to be double what we have now. So 15 is about expected to be double. Repairs and maintenance, I put at 10,500. We probably should put any savings that we have elsewhere, should probably go in this line, because we do have some repairs that we need to do at the our current plant, which is the Red Hook Commons Plant. Lab sampling, it is now monthly, but 2,500 is considered to be, I'm told, is, should be adequate, should be more than adequate. Supplies, we don't really know what supplies we're going to need, but I've moved that down to 1,000. Communications is 100. SCA software, I put down to 500. That's really just an adjustment on our current software system for water billing, because the sewer billing is going to be added to the water bill. The security system is 600, stays at 600. The wastewater treatment plant, sludge removal, that's, I moved up to 6,500 from our operators with our operator's guidance. And then the 40,000, that I'm proposing that we change, instead of grease trap slash tank pumping, it's going to be grease trap, grease trap pumping only, and that we add a line 8130.45 of tank pumping, and the difference is individuals that have individuals, tanks that include a grease trap need to be pumped out more frequently, and so separating out the grease trap pumping from the regular tank pumping, because it really is two different functions, and it happens, the grease traps will be pumped out much more frequently. There are some, I've assumed four will be, grease traps will be pumped out monthly, and that leaves 15, I believe, to be pumped out quarterly. Our operator did it by gallons, so it may not match exactly.
So 8130.45, what is the estimated?
I put in 1,000, only because we don't expect to actually have to pump out any tanks in the first year. But our operator suggested that I put a little in there just for emergencies, in case there's a problem. And I wanted to establish the line item. So that's, the total number stays the same in terms of expenses, but that's moving all the pieces around. And I have no doubt that it will change again, because we are still learning. In the next few months, we, our operator will likely reach out to the grease trap customers and find out what they're doing now, because we, that gives us a clue as to what we expect, what we will probably need to do going forward. I also expect, I also anticipate only nine months of pumping, which may be too much, because it really depends on when the final tie-in happens. Once the tie-in happens and they're actively using our system, then we will need to take over the pumping. Having all of that taken over by September is probably aggressive, it certainly needs to be done by November at the latest. So with that, are there any other quest, question? I mean, we're still in public, public hearing. I did want to share that. Yes, please?
Just a quick question. What's the year-to-year change in the general fund?
it is, so the tax, the allowable tax cap this year is 2%, and it is, it is, is under 1.5%. And the part that I'm confused about is it depends on what the basis is, so it's probably about a 1.5%. However, our base went up this year versus our, this year, which I don't understand, which makes our percentage go down a bit. But the rate actually will go down. And they are also, I was just told from the town who handles the assessments, that the assessments are going to go up, which means the rate will go down. It doesn't, the assessment going up doesn't change the amount of taxes that we are bringing in, it just adjusts the, based on your property value. You bet. So I guess with that, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We can now, well, actually, we are going to, the budget itself is included in a complete budget resolution that's under the Village Reorganization and Resolution, so we're not going to, we're not going to go to passing the budget right away, unless you all would like to. Because actually, all the people who are going to be here for this part aren't coming tonight, so.
We'll see a clean budget, I'd like to see that before. I mean, just, were there all the changes that we made today? We're not passing the budget, right?
Well, I, I was hoping that we would. The general fund, the general fund is the one that needs the public hearing. The only change to the general fund is is just adding the, adding the Comptroller line and splitting the Treasurer from the Clerk line. That's it. There's no other change to the general fund. And the water fund, there's actually, the only change is to add the .1C, that just splits the 46,000 into 37,000 and 9,000. Otherwise, the budget stays the same as presented. It's the sewer fund that's changed significantly.
So the bottom line, is, is the revenue and expenditure on the sewer the same?
Yes.
Right. And say with all three funds then?
Correct.
All right.
Do you guys want to, should we, we could jump to the reorganization now, or do you want to wait until?
Let's do it.
Let's do it, all right. Let me just find the right spot. That's not it. Okay, so we're going to do the reorganization and the budget all at the same time. So we do have several other things to talk about. We have, part of this includes appointments, and so we have our, excuse me, Board of Trustees now set, and with me as your elected mayor. This includes reappointing Jen Kavanaugh as the Village Clerk, and Ray Toll as the Village Treasurer. We have the Village Justice, Jonah Tribwasser, with the Assistant Village Justice, Thomas Mansfield. Kathy Fell is the Court Clerk, Rebecca Kent is the Deputy Court Clerk, and Christopher Montalto is the Special Prosecutor. Clark Kimball as the Zoning Enforcement Officer, Fire Inspector and Building Inspector, CEO, Code Enforcement Officer as well. Duchess County Planning is our planning consultant, and then Rodenhausen, Shale, and Polidoro as our Attorney for Planning and Zoning. We have our Village Attorney as McCabe and Mack. We have our full-time police officers of Sergeant Hildenbrand, Officer Travis Darrett, and Officer Patrick Ferry. Part-time police officers, Detective Officer David Kimball, Officers Tyler Conley, Kyle Kolazewski, Dan Riffenberg, James Simmons, and Morgan Smith. Police Department Admin Laura Hart, Highway Foreman Jake Smith, Full-Time Highway Employees Chris Coons, Ray Cassavant, Part-Time Highway Todd Van Buskirk, Buskirk, sorry. Registrar of Vital Statistics Jen Kavanaugh, Deputy Registrar Laura Hart. Our official newspaper is Kingston Daily Freeman. Our Water Operator as C3ND. Our Village Historian is Sally Dwyer McNulty. I did several of those. Our Village Engineer is Delaware Engineering. And then we have our Zoning Board of Appeals, Chair is Eric Cathell, Stephen Appenzeller, David Jevsekis, Jevsekis, Sherry Uyang, and Martin Relling. Planning Board, Elizabeth Pagano, David Pearson, Donald Hanson, Jim Rogers, and Steve Zachara. Zach, ooh, sorry, Sarchuk, I know that. Village Green Committee Brent Kovalchuk, Brenda Cagle, Brian Foran, David Pearson, and Kathy Pearson. Events, Hardscrabble Committee Mel Korka-Kiarval, Karen Smythe, Kim Bradley-Rickard, Alexandra Jamison, Amy Smith. Public Spaces Initiative Committee Brent Kovalchuk, Perry Allen, Ash Bradley-Rickard, Paulina Malekin, Nicole Rogers. Human Relations Committee Mel Korka-Kiarval, Elena Erber, Dawn Jardine, David Marcus and Weiss, Savannah Williams, Renee Zhang. Communications Committee is Mel Korka-Kiarval, Karen Smythe, and Eve Campbell. Library Board Donald O'Shea, Sally Dwyer McNulty, Trish Dansick, Sarah Devere, Joshua Bardfeld, Bardfield, Beth Goldberg, Amy Huston. And then the Cable Spectrum Cable Rep is Karen Smythe, and the Appeals Officer is Karen Smythe. Our meeting time, our regular board meeting is the second Monday of the month. I have proposed the fourth Wednesday of the month to be our Village Board Workshop. Mel Korka, you had a question. It is actually not the Board of Education meeting. They are the first and third Wednesday. It is, however, a Town Board Meeting Night. They have two, and their second one is the fourth Wednesday, so that would be a conflict. The goal of doing that, of moving hours is so that the workshop is farther away from this meeting, because currently it often, it, probably about half the time falls in the same week.
Did the Board of Ed change their meeting schedule? Because it used to be on the same night as the Town Board.
The, I don't, I didn't look at the two. I just did confirm that it's the first and third Wednesdays.
Okay. Well, then I have less of a concern about it. I just want to be able to attend those meetings.
We can also maybe try it for a little while, and if it becomes a problem, we can, we can look at it again. The problem with the fourth Thursday is that's the, when the zoning board meets. They don't meet every month, but it seems a shame to create a conflict if we don't need to. We could look at Tuesday, the fourth Tuesday. I just.
I'm fine with trying it.
Okay, all right. The other meetings remain the same. The Traffic Court is the first Wednesday, Criminal Court is the third Wednesday, Planning Board is the second Thursday, and Zoning Board of Appeals is the fourth Thursday.
May I make a suggestion?
Of course.
Like, on the Public Spaces Initiative Committee, to have Declan Dwyer McNulty as co-leasance?
Sure. You all right with that, Declan?
That'd be great, thank you.
We will add Declan.
I meet on the fourth Saturday.
Okay.
All right, any, I think that's covered. The banks are Key Bank and M&amp;T Bank. Oh, you have your Ethics Code and your Procurement Code in your packet? We haven't changed it, but we did, oh yes, thank you. But this is just an opportunity to relook and reassert that you are familiar with those. We also have the Board of Trustees' responsibilities. And they're mostly the same, reflecting what, what you are currently doing, so police, so I, as mayor, have the Police and Law Enforcement, Personnel, Insurance, Economic Development Committee, and all municipal departments. Brent Kovalchuk, oh, that's another, is that Brent Kovalchuk has agreed to continue on as Deputy Mayor, for which I am very grateful. And Brent has Highway Department, Infrastructure, Sewer Project, Water System, Village Green, Zoning Review Committee, Sauke Water Shed, Watershed Community, Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, Northern Duchess Alliance Executive Committee. Declan Dwyer McNulty is taking over the Planning and Zoning, Veterans Affairs, Emergency Services, and I added in the Senior Affairs, if that's okay.
Yeah.
And Cooley is on PSI, right?
Yes, and actually, we don't have PSI on either of these, so. We will add that. Mel Korka has the Hardscrabble Events Committee, Human Relations Committee, Communications Committee, Red Hook Together, Town Economic Development Committee, and Library Relations. And then Charlie has Facilities, Village Building and Grounds, Water Sewer Department, Energy Sustainability, and Materials Management. So I think that, oh, no, this is the one you gave me. I think that covers everything, so with that, I am going to read the resolution. It is a consolidated reorganization. Resolution number six. Whereas the Board of Trustees has received and reviewed the various annual reorganization documents, including the meeting schedule, official newspaper, and the mayor's appointees, officers, designations with any new appointments listed. And whereas the Board of Trustees has determined that the Village Law Section 4-14, 412, 32, requires the designation of banks of trust companies for the deposit of all village monies. And whereas the Board of Trustees has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to village officials and employees who use their personal automobiles while performing official duties. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees is meeting in person on April 11, 2022. And whereas the Board is aware of the existing Ethics Code and Procurement Code as embodied in our local law, and is reminded of same. And whereas the Board intends to complete the annual reorganization with consolidated voting and move to other business. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board designates the following institutions as depositories of all money received by the Village Treasurer, Clerk, and Receiver of Taxes. Key Bank, M&amp;T Bank. The Board of Trustees will approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the current federal IRS rate per mile in effect at the time of the trip. Acknowledges review and familiarity with the Ethics Code and Procurement Code of the Village of Red Hook. Appoints the official newspaper. Renews its meeting schedule as indicated in the circulated document. Approves the mayor's appointments as circulated on the sheets. I need a motion for this resolution, or I am making this motion, I guess. I am making this motion, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, was that an aye, Charlie? Excellent, thank you. Okay, thank you. That's a lot of, a lot of important detail work that is now All right, we'll put that out of the way. Now.
You can, the budget too?
Oh, yes, that's a, sorry, is that a separate resolution?
Yes.
All right, hold on. We said so many things, I thought we had it in there. Hold on. Here we go. This is resolution number seven. Whereas the Board of Trustees has received and reviewed the tentative budget and held a public hearing on same. Whereas funding lines and expense lines have been developed, reviewed, and established in board workshop meetings to reflect income projections and expenses from trending in history. And whereas the Village, Village's budget has three budget areas, General Fund, Water Budget, and Sewer Budget. Now therefore be it resolved that, the resulting General Fund budget will be within the New York State Comptroller's formula for the tax cap. Will be below that, and, and be a reduction in the tax rate. The General Fund budget will be $2,163,080, sorry, $2,163,080. And be it further resolved, the Water Fund budget and the Sewer Fund budget will remain as listed in the tentative budgets with the discussed changes in line items, with water at 529,600, and sewer at 105,800. And those General Fund, Water Fund, and Sewer Fund budgets are hereby adopted with the Treasurer to be fully advised and authorized to proceed accordingly. I make the motion to adopt this resolution. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Any further discussion?
Let's hope for a good year.
Let's hope for a good year. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I just want to take a moment to thank you all on the board, and Declan included, who joined us on two of these workshop meetings. This is my first budget, and as I said to Brent earlier, I'm still standing. This is not an easy process, and there are lots of line items and a lot of things that the Village pays for. And I think we have an opportunity to continue to be vigilant on all the things we spend, so that we can spend the monies that we have been charged with spending wisely, to do it as, to the best benefit of the Village. So thank you for all your help and support on that.
This is seven, yeah.
All right, looking at Village, at their regular business on the agenda. Perry Allen was to be here to talk about the Public Space Initiatives, Spaces Initiatives Committee's Pollinator event that's coming up May 25th?
28th, I'm sorry.
20, May 28th, it's a Saturday. Perry is out of town, and so he agreed to come to our May meeting. So that is postponed, a further discussion is postponed until May. We do have some information on the website for those who might be interested in finding out a little bit more. The next item is the Water Service Request from Mighty Donuts, which is 7268 South Broadway. It is in the town. It, they are, it's in your packet, the request. It has been reviewed by the engineer, our engineer, and our engineer believes that we have plenty of capacity within our system to incorporate the requested water. They expect to use... Do you remember that, is the number's in here somewhere?
1,400.
Oh, here it is. Yes, 1,400 gallons per day. And this will enable them to open up, they are not able to generate enough volume of water from a well on their property, and so they have requested to tap into the water main that has recently been completed along Old Post Road. And we would go into a legal contract agreement with them that I have drawn, that our legal counsel has drawn up. So I would like to, I propose that we agree to supply them water. We have a town water rate that they would be charged, as other town water customers are. I would like to propose that we agree to this request.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
There looks like there has to be an easement across the property. Is that something that we would have to?
No.
No, okay.
That's on, that's basically what we, what we would approve is that they would be allowed to purchase water from our system, and we would create a tap, basically a curb stop. It's that right, right after the, right off the main water line. It would then be on the owner to get the easement, and also install the line from the curb stop to their facility.
And they would own that line and maintain it?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a service line, right?
That would be their service line you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes, that would be on them.
So I had some comments too, if I may.
Please.
I mean, the way, I think this zone, the traditional neighborhood district was set up with three sub-districts, this plan doesn't seem to follow that, as far as, my biggest concern is how the next property south will, if ever, attach to our water system. I see, you know, the main running on the east side of Route Nine going straight through, we have a loop coming there from Old Farm Road, but as far as any future expansion of the main system, I don't see that incorporated in their plan, just a service line attachment. So if their adjacent southern property were to attach to our village water system, how would they do that? There's no provisions made for future expansion based on this plan, just a service line, but nothing as far as extending the, the water main going south.
You're talking about, I mean, that what we are, what this is, is an individual request to have a service line to their commercial building on the property.
I guess what I'm saying is, I think that the bigger picture of how future expansion on this system would work, so it doesn't seem to take that into consideration.
And that would be from our point of view, not from the individual property owner's point of view, correct?
Well, either our point of view or from the town's point of view, so this is a town district. And I think we've discussed this in the past at workshops, but, you know, as far as a town creating a water district of their own, they could, we could still supply them water, but we would have more control, and it would be organized in a more efficient manner to allow for future expansion of this district. There's members of this Board who, over 10 years, helped develop the zoning language for the traditional neighborhood district in the town predicated on infrastructure. This is a very important consideration. I'm not saying that this business should be denied water, but I just think it should be organized in such a way as to allow expansion of the rest of the traditional neighborhood district. So I'm a little apprehensive about doing piecemeal applications to our water system without looking at the future growth and expansion of the infrastructure and also the, the traditional neighborhood district.
I, I, I agree with you. I guess the, the two things I would say is the property to the north of this property already has an agreement with the Village for taps off that main, that's, they, they funded the, the completion of that loop. So the question becomes farther south of this property.
Right.
If there became a time where it made sense for a main to be put in, we could, I mean, there's, there's a way to make that work, but I, I completely agree with you that we should discuss with the town what their intentions are, to see if we can't come up with a plan that is comprehensive as opposed to one, one-offs every time, which is currently what we are in a position to have to do.
And the Village cannot create a water district in the town.
Correct.
We could only sell on a parcel-by-parcel means. And again, I'm looking not only for the benefit of the Village, in that we can control our water supply more, in the event that we have a, some type of water district established we could better regulate and provide oversight as to our supply capacity. If we needed to expand our supply, at least we would know where to do it, how to do it, and what it would supply. So I just think this type of piecemeal additions to our water system in the town of Red Hook could be problematic in the future.
I, I, I do very much understand where you're coming from, and I do, we had spoken about the possibility of having a meeting with, with the town, which I, I think we should proceed to do. I happen to believe, I happen to think that we should go forward on this individual case. It certainly is a question as to when, when do you, when do you, how many of the individual requests do you, when do you say no? But I, I think this particular property owner is working hard to create a business in, in the broader Red Hook area, and they have, they have stuck with this property longer than many probably would have. And I, I myself would like to, would like, given that they're not asking for a quantity of water that would be, that we have plenty of capacity, according to our engineer, for this particular addition. Any other comments? So I guess I would make a motion to approve the, the, the Village providing water to this, to this property. Wrote it down somewhere. 7268 South Broadway. And that you, and I don't know if I can make this motion, but to give me the, as, as Mayor, the authority to sign the contract on the Village's behalf. If I can't make that motion, would someone make that motion?
Is it 7269, not 7268?
So the, the access is off South Broadway, not Old Farm Road?
The access is off Old Farm Road.
Okay.
Because that's, that's where the main line is. So it would go along the back, the back of the property.
Okay, and it's not, is it the former location of like, the bagel shop?
Botini.
No, it's pa, it's past, it's farther south than the bagel shop. It's the Botini Building.
Okay.
The, the white concrete building. It was most, most recently, it was an antique store.
Google Maps. It was an antique store?
Yes, for not very long, but-
But the easement goes over the old bagel shop?
Okay, yeah, I know where Botini is, okay.
Yes, and so the easement that they would be required to get goes over where the old bagel shop was.
Bagel shop right here?
Yeah. Oh, all right, all right.
This is Old Farm Road, so off, and it's Traditions and Back here.
Yeah. How about Holy Cow and, and that Hardscrabble Plaza, where do they get their water from?
They get their water from a well.
Okay.
They're not on, they're not on the water, the village water.
And Lyceum gets their water from a well?
Yeah, they must, mhm.
Okay.
That's all, yeah, that's all in the, in the town.
I was just trying to understand the, the context a little bit better.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm going to make that motion. Do I have a second?
My second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? All right, so I think we're going to do a roll call vote. Deputy Mayor Kovalchuk.
I'll vote no for the reasons stipulated earlier.
Trustee Lang. Can you put the mic closer to the, I think maybe by the-
By the, it's by the projector.
By the projector. Sorry, go ahead. Can you say that again?
Well, so, the water line, the, the connection for, for this enterprise goes all the way through the parcel to the north, which-
Yes.
Currently is undeveloped, but I would presume when that parcel's redeveloped, this water line would also be there, they would tap into this same water line and would not go for, they would go for their own tap off of the main?
Yes. They, the, the owner of that property over which Mighty Donuts needs to get an easement, they helped fund the, the closing of that loop which made the water main go down Old Farm Road. So they already have an agreement with the Village for taps off the line for their, for their property there.
Yeah, no, I, I do recall that. Other question is, how close does this get you to the, the water lines that make up the district to the south? Because there is a district with that small subdivision. I thought there was a water-
Yeah, there's a Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority District, a Rokeby.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that services that subdivision to the south?
Yes, and I, I believe maybe Stewart's, but don't quote me on that.
Oh, maybe.
Wasn't there talk at one time of connecting the two?
Yes. And the Village actually explored that opportunity with the Authority, and the, the treatment plant needed hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of work. And so it was not in our best interest to connect at that point in time.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, I, you know, I'm also aware of the, you know, the, the need to, plan this out sensibly and not, you know, casually tack on additional individual parcels when we don't really have a, a plan for the, the bigger picture and for the, the core of this TND area. I think that leads me to abstain at this point.
All right. Trustee Kirval.
So if I can get this clarified, the ideal thing would be that the town would set up a district. If we put this, put this business as a hookup, does that preclude from being able to do a district later?
Probably not, I just don't see the, seems to be a redundancy in that. This, this particular hookup is for one particular property and doesn't include the entire district, so if a main were to run, it looks like it's running right now on the east side of Route Nine, which would probably go down to Hannaford, or it could run on the west side, but that would be something that a district formation would be able to clarify.
That would be for a, a main to go down to then provide the-
For water for the entire traditional neighborhood district that was approved by the town, I don't know, almost 10 years ago at this point.
Brent, could you clarify, where is the traditional neighborhood district?
It's south of the village, all the way down to Hannaford.
Okay.
It's a town district.
Okay, so-
Zoning district, and includes Traditions.
Metzger Road, oh, both sides of Route Nine.
Both sides, Hardscrabble Commons, down to Hannaford on the east side, and then there's a property right south of Hannaford Drive that's also included. And then on, on the west side, including Traditions, which is part of the, and that's also, the Village supplies water to Traditions, but it's a Dutchess County Department, or Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority-controlled district.
Yeah. Okay, so-
And they're part of the loop system, so they shared the cost with two property owners on either side of Route Nine, on Old Farm Road. So there were three partners in that, in that project that put in the infrastructure, and they're buying water from the Village at that point in time.
So the town doesn't have any town water infrastructure, all the water infrastructure is owned by the county? Like for, for that?
No, the town, the town has some water infrastructure, just not down, not in the south side of the village.
They're more on the north side of the village.
Okay, okay, but, but like you said, like Lyceum or Holy Cow, that's all well, well water.
At this point.
Hannaford, all right.
And, and I'll just add, my perspective is that, you're correct in that if we were to, if the town were to create a district, and we were to lay out mains that went down the west side going behind Mighty Donuts, for example, it would replace the service line that they have. In a, in a perfect world, this would all be mapped out, and we would be doing it the proper way. We are not in a perfect world, and I myself believe that this is an appropriate thing to say yes to. The majority of the cost is on the property owner, and this will enable them to actually open a business. Without this water supply, they are not able to open their business, because they are not able to generate the water supply from a well that is required by the Department of Health for the county. And so I, again, I fully understand the need to have the bigger plan, and I also recognize that we have a need for businesses that would like to be here. And so that's why I believe that this would be, and, again, it's not ideal, but I do think that it would be an appropriate opportunity to support a business that would like to be here, as we press forward with discussions with the town to come up with a, the broader plan, because this will not be the last business that would request for, request village water. Just as a point of background, the, this particular owner or owners have been working with the town for over a year to try and get this business going. They have hung in there.
So, being that I'm up, I'm just going to continue my comments, is that okay?
Please.
I think that because it does not preclude us being able to develop a, a district, or ask the town to develop a district, I vote in favor of the motion. I do think that we should prioritize looking into whether or not we can support the TND district with infrastructure, because I do think that's an issue with it being developed. Those lots have been, that bagel lot has been empty for a while. I do think it's important to see if that is an option, but I don't want to penalize a business because, you know, municipalities haven't figured it out yet.
Thank you. Trustee Dwyer McNulty?
I just have one more question, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to get my head around-
Don't be sorry, ask all the questions you'd like.
The medical, I think it's maybe an orthopedist who's just north on Old Farm Road, do they, where do they get their water from?
They, I don't believe they're on the village water system. They, I don't believe they're on the village water system, so they must have a well.
Okay, but Traditions is getting it from the village?
Traditions has an agreement with the village, yes.
Okay, um, I vote in favor of the, uh, extension.
Okay, um, I also vote in favor. So I believe that's a three, one and one, so that means it passes. I believe that's how that works. So thank you. And that just reiterates that we have, we have work to do. All right. Now we are on election expenses. And we turn the mic over to Clerk Kavanaugh.
As the village clerk, I am to report to the board as to the expenses, uh, created by the special election that was held on March 15th, 2022. As you'll see in your packets, uh, the total expense, including labor costs, that would be the election inspectors, food costs and other expenses comes to $465.84. Uh, I ask that you accept these expenses and approve the treasure to, uh, pay the election inspectors.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, and just to clarify in our discussion moment here, um, our budget is for a total of... Oh, it's in here somewhere. Elections, our budget is for a total of, uh, 1,300, so this is well under our budget.
That's annually?
Well, it...
Or it's like...
Whenever we have an election.
Yeah.
Normally elections are every other year.
Okay.
But this, that's why this is called a spec, special election.
So it'd be like seven, 650 per year, approximately?
Uh, it would appear that, whatever, whatever we spent this year, each election requires the same. We need two election inspectors.
Yeah.
We feed them.
Snacks.
And, um, there's training in there. So yeah, whatever we spent this year is about what, what we would spend on any, any given election.
The, the training was not added in here, so that does need to be added into, it was $50.
$50, yeah.
Okay, so plus 50 for the...
Uh, actually, no, it was 25.
Per, per inspector or total?
Nope, just total, it was one.
All right. I mean, it sounds good because it says 50.
So four, 49084, please.
So I, um, I will move the amended number, um, second.
Second.
Thank you, any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great.
Thank you, and thank you Jen for coordinating all the election stuff. And thank you to Laura who also, um, got it, got it rolling. Okay, we have a resolution regarding records retention. Which I need to find. Thank you, it's been found, okay. This is resolution number eight. Resolved by Board of, by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook. That retention and disposition schedule for New York Local Government Records issued pursuant to Article 57-A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law and containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records is hereby adopted for use by all officers in legally disposing of valueless records listed therein. Further resolved that in accordance with Article 57-A, only those records will be disposed of that are described in retention and disposition schedule for New York Local Government Records, LGS-1, after they have met the minimum retention periods described therein. Only those records will be disposed of that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal or historical value to merit retention beyond established legal minimum periods. May I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, a second.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Super, thank you. All right, um, municipal investment grant, this is the, um, we have an opportunity to apply for a grant to the county. The details have changed a little from last year. Mel Corca, do you want to talk about this one?
Yeah, sure, so, um, we were first looking at maybe, um, looking into a language access, um, grant opportunity, but instead, since we are, have to have the application in by May 4th and we're only allowed one application per entity, we're considering going for, um, getting a planning design for Abrams Park. So that was the hope that you guys would approve that, um, application.
And, so, uh, just a couple things, one, the, the two changes, well, the one change that we can't apply for multiple, it's gotta be just one, the other is that the application is due May 4th instead of the end of May. Which is why we wanted to bring it up now. We do not have an actual application prepared yet, um, but we wanted to bring it up to the, to the board to approve applying for the grant.
Do we have an estimate on how much?
No, we have...
The services of landscape architect? We don't, so is there a, a budget that you're looking at or...
Um, it's a max budget for the grant of 100,000.
So do you, asking for the entire 100,000?
We have to get estimates, so that, that'll be part of writing the grant and, you know, and then we'll bring it before you, I believe.
Okay.
I did receive, um, communication from the town supervisor as to whether or not we wanted to go in, on a grant together. I'm not quite sure what that entails. They are looking, um, I believe at, um, sidewalks related to the east and west rec parks. So I'm not quite sure how we, I mean, the parks, it'd be great to include, um, the connecting of Abrams Park with the rec park. And that would then make logical sense of connecting them all together.
Yes, it would.
So we'd, we'd certainly explore that option. So we just wanted to, to bring that forth. I don't know if, um, it makes sense to have a motion to allow me as mayor to sign, to, to, um, present that grant, to submit that grant to the county. If that's in agreement, if you all are in agreement with that.
Can we see the grant first or...
No, absolutely not.
What's it for? It's for, it's for walkways?
No, well, it would be, from our standpoint, it would be, uh, design services to, um, take a look at Abrams Park and see how we might...
So still in, in kind of like a...
We haven't, yeah, we, we're not in a, we're, we don't have the grant.
Consultation.
So here's, why don't we do it this way? We will, um, we will, um, bring it forth at the, at the workshop meeting. I think that gives us, because since we're going to switch to the Fourth Wednesday, that should be right before. So we'll bring, we'll bring that forward, um, if, if anyone wants to get involved in working on it, et cetera, please feel free.
Uh, one of the things that's nice about the grant opportunity is it pays for planning, which isn't always, you know, available, so that's why.
Okay. I mean, it sounds like right now we're applying, we're applying for money to make a plan, is that right?
It would be to pay for, um, professional design services.
Okay.
So we'll bring, we'll bring that forth at the, at the workshop meeting.
Okay.
Charlie, yes.
I think the, the idea of connecting the two parks is, is a great one, but obviously the, the big ticket item would be a bridge over the Sorki.
Yes.
And there's some advantage too, there's a little advantage because the property between the two parks is a high priority on the Community Preservation Fund project plan. So recreational easement could be...
Excuse me.
There's, there's, uh, yeah, there are significant funds there. The other is with, with a planning design, we then are in a better position to go out for grants to fund the, um, implementation of whatever is, um, is designed. But prior to that, we don't, we're not, we're not in a position to ask for anything because we don't know what we're asking for yet. All right, the next thing on the, um, agenda is a, a presentation on village demographics. Trustee Kirval has been digging into the, um, 2020 census and I thought it would be appropriate to share just some of the detail, because I think it's, it's helpful to be reminded of who it is that we represent. So with that, Mel Corca, are you ready to take over the screen?
I think so, yes, I'm going to...
And while they're getting the tech right, I will just say a, a big thank you to Patrick. And Patrick, what's your last name? I forget. Rizny. So Patrick is here tonight because Cassie Coleman is on a school trip in Costa Rica. So thank you very much, Patrick, for being here and facilitating our meeting. Take it away, Mel Corca.
Okay, um, so basically, the reason why we started looking into this, um, information was because as part of creating a communication plan for the Communications Committee, we wanted to kind of understand who we were trying to reach and how is best to reach them. Um, and by doing that, you really have to use data to figure out where you're at because things change. So, um, this is a example of one of the things that helped us realize that, um, really pushing the newsletter that links to the website is important because most people now use internet and websites. And that just mailing things to people's, uh, with the water bill isn't necessarily going to reach everyone and I'll go into that a little bit more later. So one of the tools we were using is the census. And as you probably know, the US Census, they do it every 10 years. But the way that they build the American Community Survey is they apply regional and national trends and projections to create that every year. The 2020 survey, or that is out now, the Community Survey, is, because there was such an issue with the data collection, with the 2020 survey, they're using vintage 2020 estimates. So basically, they're using 2010 data and applying regional and national trends. So we're actually 11 years out from a lot of the data for the Community Survey results. They have released, um, a couple tables, but that means that the margin of error is gonna be a little bit, um, it's not as accurate. So that's something to keep in mind. And another thing to keep in mind is that sometimes a result can be, it can be less accurate because of the way that it was, um, collected. So a, a good example is now with the, um, Latino and Hispanic communities, there was issues with whether or not people felt safe in reporting. So the, the, um, the Census Bureau anticipates that there'll be more than a 5% drop in the accuracy and in that population, which you can actually see in our census results. So, moving on. This is kind of a breakdown of who is like a village resident, right? And so you can start to draw some conclusions. You can say that we have, um, our households make more money than national average. You know, individuals make more money, we're more employed. But then when you look at the actual margin of error, you can see that those numbers kind of disappear. And it, we're close with the national average, so it's, it's a good guess, basically. So that's to say, take these, these conclusions with a grain of salt. The population, there was one, um, table that was released, it was the redistricting data and that shows our population of residents at 1,975. A lot of the, the community, um, survey results use an estimated of 2,134. And you can see the margin of error is about that difference. So, um, one of the things that we were looking into was housing because, and also we wanted to kind of see how we are reaching people with those, um, seasonal service updates that we were mailing. It's interesting to see that the village has about 60% of people that live in their housing units own them and about 40% are renters. So that's an interesting, um, fact to think about how we're reaching people. Also, almost three in four housing units are a detached, single-family home. That might change now that we've passed that accessory dwelling, um, unit law, so that's something also to think about. And then there's a zero vacancy rate for renters, so we know that there's demand for renter, um, apartments. One of the things that was released was that, uh, redistricting data, which has actual, um, we, we are more white than the national estate average. Eight in 10 people are white. And here you can see, um, that Hispanic or Latino figure is estimated to be 3.5, whereas in 2010 it was 7%. So they anticipated that there'd be a 5% drop. Again, this is, the one to the left is from the release data, the one to the right is, is, um, estimated. So another thing that's interesting is in the village, we have a lot of people that are enrolled in school. So one out of three people are actually enrolled in a school currently. And that's, that's an interesting thing, it's higher than the average in the nation, which is one in four. 77.1% of residents older than 18 have a bachelor's degree or higher, which is a lot higher than the national rate. And also, almost one in three people have jobs in the education industry. So that's an interesting thing to keep in mind. Another thing to look at when we're thinking about who we are going to communicate with and how best to communicate is what households look like. So four of 10 households have a member over 60 and one in four families live with children under 18. And what I found surprising is about half of households are single person. So that's kind of an interesting, uh... And another thing that is kind of interesting is that 50% of residents have moved into their current home in the village since 2010. So that's a lot of people that are new to the community. They're not necessarily new to Dutchess County, or they could have moved somewhere in the village. But that does mean that there's a certain amount of people that we have to reiterate and give them the information of who are our police, what's our recycling schedule? You know, what the highway department does, those kinds of things that they might not know because they might not have lived here for that long. And then also, to the left is where have people moved from? Now, that's a projection using 2010 data, so it might have changed now that highs, um, housing costs have gone up. But most people from 2010 were moving from within Dutchess County. So that's also something about, we don't have to necessarily tell everyone, everything that's happening in Dutchess County because they might already know. But we do have to communicate the things that are unique to Red Hook, to all these new residents. And that's it.
Wonderful, um, thank you, Mel Corca. I thought that was, it was important just to share a couple of things that really struck me. One was the high level of renters, which goes back to if we send something in the water bill, that goes to the owner of the property. So potentially 40% of the people aren't getting the, the newsletter from the water bill. And, uh, and I was surprised to hear that the half, the population has moved here since 2010. That, that, that seems awfully high. Though I've moved here since 2010 and I did move from Dutchess, another place in Dutchess County, so I fall in that category. But I just, I thought it was an important opportunity just to share some of that information and as more accurate information comes from the 2020 census data, um, we can have an update. So the next item, and, and we are fortunate enough to have some police officers here who can share why this might be important, is, um, I wanted to get an approval for upgrading the, saw the police department software of Police Pro. When we upgraded the, um, computers and the server so that it could accommodate Windows 10, one of the things it did was it pointed out the fact that we have software in the police department that doesn't work with Windows 10. So we needed an upgrade. And the cost of that upgrade is, uh, $10,000. The company that provides the software has agreed to let us pay half in this year's budget and half in next year's budget. Perhaps Officer Starrett, you can tell us why Police Pro matters to the police department?
Sure. Um, well, we've had Police Pro for the last at least 11 years. So if you think about the fact that we've used the same data system. So the officers that have been here for a while are familiar with that system. Not to mention that if we switch to a different system, there's no saying that the information we have from Police Pro will be, it will move to a new system. So you'd kind of lose that data, just like before, 2010, we had SJS, which is another reporting system. So technically, when someone looks for a record from 2009 and back, it's not in our current system. It's important to stay on the same Police Pro system for that reason as well, so that if we do need record keeping, it can be found pretty easy.
And so what, what, um, what kind of records are included in Police Pro?
Basically, it's a data entry system, so anything from traffic stops, tickets issued, arrests made and calls for service. Those include people's information as well as phone numbers, so contact information, um, which is a, a big part of our investigation, right? So if we need a phone number from somebody or email address or a... So if we need a phone number from somebody, or email address, or a location, or a home address, all that would be listed in our reports.
Gotcha. We also did, Sergeant Hildenbrand did check with some other police departments, and there are a couple of police departments that use the system that the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office uses, and that would cost us a minimum of, I have the numbers, but not in front of me, a minimum of $20,000 for a year.
Besides the fact that we're using the system for the last 10 years and having that information, as far as from a budget standpoint goes, this is the cheapest option.
And ongoing, the annual fee will be about $5,700, but that doesn't kick in until the following year. That's excluded in the $10,000. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing of this software upgrade for Police Pro. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Any other questions?
Has this been included in the budget for the next budget?
It's included in this budget and the next budget, yes. Yes, it is.
Can I ask a question about the reporting? Was there any, have we found out anything about the reports?
No, actually, I haven't asked that question.
Okay.
But I'm sure with an upgrade, that there are new opportunities for compiling information and reporting it out.
Yeah, I don't know, to be honest with you. I'm not sure what the new system is going to be different from the old one. I just feel that it's a newer, better version of what we have now, so.
So there's a chance it'll be better?
I'm pretty sure that the system we have is the one that was installed 10 years ago, and I don't think there's been a software upgrade since then. So I think there'll be a lot of new opportunities with the new system. New flexibility, I would say. All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. All right, now we get to go to Department and Committee Reports, starting with the Treasurer, Ray Toll. You're on. Oh, shoot.
Yes. The Treasurer's Report, as of the end of March, March 31st, our balances were as follows. In the General Fund, $520,786.15. I'd like to point out that this number is higher than the previous month. This doesn't happen too often. It's higher by about $73,000, and the reason for that is that we had a sales taxes come in at just over $100,000. And we also had a, we received our unpaid village taxes for 2021 of $54,000. So that contributed.
And those both come from the county, correct?
That's correct.
Or through the county?
That was from the county.
Thank you.
The, in the Water Fund, at the end of the month of March, it was $190,697.34. Trust and Agency, $23,606.70. Petty Cash, $44.18. Village Green, $4,773.92. Hardscrabble, $9,320.65. Health Insurance, $3,479.16. And the Sewer Fund, $270,671.92. I'd like to point out that the very next day, on April the 1st, we paid costs of $265,371.18. So in essence, the balance is about $5,300.74. In terms of the reserve checking balances, the Fire Department, $5,033.64. Police, $14,586.04. USDA, $134,041.38. Highway, $30,583.97. Snow Reserve, $3,279.61. Tower Reserve, $17,712.2. Unemployment, $4,544.29. Court Reserve, $3,298.70. The Office Reserve, $972.56. The total monthly expenses for the month of March, in the General Fund, $160,720.13. Water Fund, $14,867.15. Trust and Agency, $2,767.84. And Sewer, $4,646.15. That concludes the Treasurer's Report for the month of March.
Thank you, Ray. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
So on the profit-loss schedule, does this include the new income from the county? On this profit and loss, but it does.
What you got on the restrictions?
Four, eight.
Or to the 8th of April?
Okay.
That would be, that would have been included.
Okay.
Yes, so you see it, you see it there.
Yeah.
And then you see it there.
Very nice.
And the two, was it $270,000 or $260,000 you mentioned in sewer expenses?
Yeah, there was $270,000 momentarily.
That's the, yeah, that's the sewer project. So we have.
But it's not listed in expenses, right?
Not yet. That'll be in.
So in April?
You'd see a big number.
April will be big.
Oh, thank you.
April will be even bigger, because there'll probably be a second one.
Okay. I was just confused, because you mentioned, and I didn't see it.
Great, thank you very much, Ray.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, did we all say, all in favor? Aye, of accepting the Treasurer's Report? Yes, yes, we did, thank you. I, there are two items in regular business that I forgot, but we'll come, that I missed, but we'll come back to it at the end of the Committee Reports. I have police reports. For the month of March, there were 345 incidents, 252 in the Village of Red Hook, 90 in the Town of Red Hook, and three in the Village of Tivoli. Uniform traffic tickets, there were 83, 33 in the Village of Red Hook, including one parking ticket, and 50 in the Town of Red Hook. And then arrests, there were nine, two in the Village of Red Hook, and seven in the Town of Red Hook. And I believe that is all that I need to report on. So then Deputy Mayor Kovalchuk.
I'll start with the Village Green Committee met the report. Current balances, the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts as of March 31st are as follows. Community beautification, we have a balance of $2,452.21. Shade Tree Contractual, $2,500. And the Village Green Checking Account, $4,773.92. There are no Village Green Committees meetings held during the month of March. Plans for the 2022 Annual Spring Planting Day and Arbor Day celebrations are being prepared. Tree sites have been selected, and property owners' approval have been secured. Trees will be planted on East Market Street, West Market Street, Park Avenue, Bennett Road, Elizabeth Street, and Garden Street. The Village Highway Department is preparing a list of trees to be pruned or removed. Trees included may create hazardous conditions for vehicular and/or pedestrian safety. And residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent village right-of-way or state right-of-way, volunteering for planting days, or making a contribution to support the Village Green Committee's various community beautification projects, may contact David Pearson, the Village Clerk, or myself. Village of Red Hook Highway Department met the report. The Village Highway Department began picking up leaves and brush during the week of April 4th. This service will continue on every 1st and 3rd Monday of the month. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris and brush in separate piles curbside and not in the street. And please limit brush piles to one per household per month, and limit the size of brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet. The Highway Department will not pick up tree branches larger than six inches in diameter. Brush that includes tree trunks, stumps, garbage, or construction material will not be picked up. Neighbors are encouraged to share a brush pile. This will make pickup easier and quicker. The Highway Department will begin sweeping streets beginning the week of April 11th. A second sweeping is scheduled for the week of April 25th. The Town of Red Hook has offered the use of their street sweeper, and the Village of Red Hook will provide the driver. A service agreement is being prepared for approval by the Red Hook Town Board and the Village Board of Trustees. Costs to the village will only include fuel for the vehicle.
Just to clarify, we actually have a shared services agreement already in effect.
In effect, good. So we look forward to having clean streets. Residents are reminded to sweep or rake sand or gravel from lawn edges into the side of the streets. Please place sand and gravel in a row, not in a pile, to facilitate more efficient cleanup. The Village Highway Department has received three estimates for a zero-turn lawnmower with a bag attachment to replace an existing zero-turn lawnmower. A Fair's number 15 X300, 61-inch, 40 horsepower with a Fair's FastVac Easy Dump 61 bagger. The estimated price. That sounds like a good one, right?
I know, he knows exactly what we're talking about. He's probably the only one, right?
I have no clue what that means, but it sounds awesome.
It's the kind we already have, actually.
The estimated price of $17,400 will be deducted from the fiscal year 2022-23 maintenance of street capital outlay, chips, a highway reserve account, and the water fund. An estimate was received from Customs Street Services LLC to provide services to clean the village's creek catch basins and drywells. The estimated cost of $285 per hour plus $95 per hour per laborer shall not exceed fiscal year 2022-23 general fund budget line. That's 5110.46 maintenance of street catch basins and culverts at the allocated amount of $10,000. The Village Highway, and this should cover all the catch basins in the village. And prior, we were on a one-third village rotation, but this will work out better. The Village Highway Department will prepare a list of all catch basins and drywells scheduled to be pumped and/or cleaned. A memo from the Dutchess County Transportation Council on March 7th notified the village that a traffic count for Firehouse Lane and Fifth Street will be conducted during 2022. And no revenue from the sale of scrap metal was received during the month of March. Total revenue generated from the sale of scrap metal in this current fiscal year is $5,599.95. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $41,892.26 has been generated. Proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway, Water, and Materials Management Departments. Resident and businesses interested in donating scrap metal may contact the Village Highway Department at 845-758-8600, or the Village Clerk's office. And Highway Department personnel will assist property owners by picking up their scrap metal upon request. Are the big ones. The Reddick Sewer Project. Meetings were held on March 4th, 11th, and 18th in the Village of Reddick Building. We meet every other Friday with the engineers, the contractors, or the prime general and the prime electrical contractor. Karen and I usually attend. For the most part, they give us a breakdown of where they are, and what they're doing, and where they're going. So this is all on, will be on the website. You can go almost for the last three meetings, but where we ended up on the March 18th meeting, which was the last one. Installation of the two-inch force main is progressing southward on east side of North Broadway, and is currently at the Stewart Shop on Cherry Street. Two runs of one and a half and two-inch force main, which are on the north side of East Market Street, and on the west side of North Broadway, have been successfully pressure leak tested. Sostel Contracting Incorporated continues with cable routing and existing service inspections of the Baywright Properties. And concerns have been responded to, including restoration of the Elmendorf Inn. Green for spring events and possible insufficient electrical services for sewer upgrades of a West Market Street property. Installation of the two-inch force main will continue southward on North Broadway toward Grave Street. Directional drilling for non-New York State DOT road crossings is scheduled to begin March 21st, which it already has. I believe Mel Corca was the recipient of some directional drilling today, right?
I was just going to say, I think we can have an up-to-date, an update on where the sewer project is.
There's a lot of pipe at the Lutheran Church property right now that's being dragged through a hole and.
All through the library.
Through the library. Application number one funds have been distributed by the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation to the village, and will be forwarded to Carver Construction. No erosion issues have been observed, and directional drilling is being proposed for properties on the west side of South Broadway, from Fraley Street to West Market Street. This will save restoration costs and ease property owners' concerns. USDA Form E, Report Number 1.01 of 22522, has been prepared by the Village of Reddick.
Yes, for, by review by CT Mail, but that's fine.
Additional notes, the New York State Environmental Facilities Program compliance second quarter clean water state revolving fund is being completed by CT Mail for review by the village, and submission to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. Work is anticipated, it continues through April 1st, including 37, 39, 43, 47, and 49 East Market Streets. Is that you? Not yet?
Not yet.
Discussions continue to provide additional funding for CT Mail associates and inspectors during all or portions of extended construction and work weeks, which will include 50, 60 hours per week. Another project we're working on is the Village of Reddick Water Distribution System Maintenance and Improvement Projects. Meetings were held on March 11th and 25th in the Village Building. We met with our Village Engineers, Delaware Engineering. Water system maps are being coordinated and reviewed. They're reviewing locations of pipes from the well field, storage tanks, the Firehouse Lane for inclusions on the map. Delaware Engineering continues to add and edit valve, hydrant, and main locations. This will also include complete roster of meters and connections from the mains to the houses. Delaware Engineering is obtaining estimates from northeast subsurface imaging to locate valves, mains, hydrants in the southeast, northeast, northwest, and portions of the southwest quadrants, including Reddick Estates of the village, as well as Reddick Town areas receiving village water surfaces. The water leaks, Delaware Engineering is to obtain reports from National Water Tech and provide estimates.
Northeast Water Tech.
Northeast Water Tech, sorry, thank you. And provide estimates and priorities for repairs. Valve locations of valves in the southeast quadrant will be complete in the spring of 2022. Additional estimates for other quadrants are forthcoming. Hydrant locations, the location of hydrants in the southeast quadrant will be complete in spring 22, 2022. Additional estimates are also forthcoming for that location. Well repair, pressure gauges and well seal repairs have been approved for well number nine. Repairs for the skater system are included in the submitted $1.8 million New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Water Infrastructure Improvement Grant application. Pretty good, huh?
I'm very impressed.
Anyway, there's a lot going on. Shared services for Highway Water and Sewer Administration, a meeting was held on March 25th in the Reddick Village Building to discuss the possibility of sharing the services of an administrator for the Highway Water and Sewer Departments between the Village of Reinbeck and the Village of Red Hook. We had two trustees from the Village of Reinbeck join in the discussions. It was determined at this time, however, that the Village of Reddick is not in a position to fully articulate the scope of work for the sewer system. A shared service agreement could not be accurately determined, and the conversations with the Village of Reinbeck should continue. The Village of Reddick defines maintenance and operation procedures and protocols for its infrastructure requirements. As far as the, we have a question? You're good?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Some of the committees I sit on with the Town, Town of Reddick Zoning Review Committee, did not have a meeting. The Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board did not meet. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of March 31st is $2,761,964.24. There were no meetings of the Northern Dutchess Alliance Executive Committee, and the watershed, Sawkill Watershed Community, a meeting was held on March 15th via Zoom. Presentations included topics regarding migratory species that depend on the Sawkill Watershed. Speakers included Amy Sheen, the Sawkill Watershed Amphibian Migration Project Coordinator, and Lee Stickell, discussing migratory amphibians. The Town of Reddick Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, or LWRP Working Group, met on March 30th via Zoom. We reviewed the draft amendments of Section 3, which are the policies of the Reddick LWRP. These propose a. These proposed amendments compared policies to the nineteen ninety-four version of the town's plan. Ted Fink of Green Plan Incorporated, the Reddick Town Planner Incorporated, incorporated other policies of the town that had been implemented since nineteen ninety-four. The Village of Reddick Zoning Review Committee, there were no meetings held during the month of March. And the Village of Reddick Public Spaces Initiative had a meeting on March twenty-sixth in the Reddick Village Municipal Parking Lot. The community, and this basically talked about the Pollinator Project. The Reddick Community Center will host Pollinator Gardens event scheduled for May twenty-eighth. The gardener at Reddick Community Center will be assisting to establish a pollinator garden at the community center. The event will introduce the Public Spaces Initiative Pollinator Garden Project to the public and offer instructions, demonstrations, and provide materials for people interested in planting their own garden. The community center will also provide storage, seeds, and mulch, instructional information in the center's makerspace, and shared programs with the Reddick Public Library also being planned for the event. A prototypical pollinator garden will be planted in the South Broadway planting beds at the Reddick Village Municipal Parking Lot. A list of location and other gardens within the Village of Reddick will be available at the Reddick Chamber of Commerce kiosk. Sun Common and the Village of Reddick have agreed to have a pollinator garden installed along the outside perimeter of the West Reddick Solar CSA fence at the Reddick Village Wellfields. And we're working with, or negotiating with, actually trying to get involved, a landscape, a local landscaping firm to assist in that project. The Public Spaces Initiative will also be present, the Old Dutch Village Garden Club Annual Plant Sale, and the Mill Road Elementary School Plant Sale on May fourteenth. Anyone interested in volunteering or learning more about the Public Spaces Initiative project can contact the, I guess, the website that's published on our village website. And that's all I have.
You sure? That's all?
I think so.
Okay.
Sorry, there's a lot going on.
And to thank you have a full-time job as well. Thank you, Brent. With that, Trustee Lang.
Yes, yes, where was I? I have a couple of reports on for Materials Management for the month of March. We collected, disposed of two point seven eight tons of the total recycling, that's garbage, cardboard, and paper. And we disposed of five point seven nine tons of garbage. And we collected two thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars in tags, and that's tags sold from our three neighbors, my friends at the library and at Taste Park. So this came.
And Agway. We sell garbage tags at Agway also. Sorry.
Oh, and Agway, okay. I didn't see any record for sales from Agway last month, but we did want to. And so, be the costs for the disposal garbage-wise, that was a total cost of six hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. That's about two thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars with the caveat that obviously the costs to us are more in labor and resources to transport the garbage. And then my other report is Water and Environmental Facilities monthly report for the month of March. So during the month of March, the Water and Environmental Facilities, seven million five hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred total gallons, which is an average of two hundred forty-three thousand three hundred gallons per day. So this annual daily average is right in line with the recent past and continuing that trend, which is fairly stable, just below two hundred fifty thousand gallons a day. And during the month of March, the water treatment plant used eighty-three gallons of sodium hypochlorite to treat that water. So that's an average daily use of two point six seven gallons a day. We also sent out three samples for bacteriological testing. I'm not quite sure whether it's three, because we had been sending four samples out. I think for some reason.
We are not required to do four, and so we reduced to three.
I've yet to see anything come back apart from absent for color form and ECO, so we seem to be doing well. No suggestion that there's any issues with the water supply. And otherwise, there were, I saw there were a number of issues with the water system that were scheduled to be addressed this week. So hopefully those will go ahead. And then we still have some of that work with the wastewater treatment plant. Is it right that we're still waiting to hear about grant applications or potential funding for that work?
There are a couple of the items on the water system that are included in the WIA Grant that we're waiting, still waiting to hear about. The wastewater treatment plant, we're still waiting for some pricing on some of that. And then trying to figure out where the funding will come from. Great, that's it? Awesome, thank you. Trustee Carval.
Okay. Reddick Together. Reddick Together's monthly meeting was held on Thursday, April seventh, twenty twenty-two at twelve noon. The meeting's theme was what is Reddick Together and what do we want it to be? The three prompts were Reddick Together helps me, my organization, my community, buy blank. Answers range from relationships, connection, big picture perspective, cross pollination, learning from other organizations, and individual insights, support, and the opportunity to be in community with other service-minded community leaders. The attendance broke into three smaller discussion groups with the prompt, what are the most pressing issues facing Reddick? Themes raised were housing and affordability, mental health and youth, economic development, climate change, community discord, including marginalized communities in leadership spaces, as well as walkability and bike paths. These suggestions will be used to create topic themes for upcoming monthly meetings. If you're interested in attending a Reddick Together meeting, please contact me at m k j a r v a l at reddicknyvillage.org, and I will forward your information to the facilitator. Reddick Town Economic Development Committee. The committee meets every Wednesday over Zoom at eight thirty a.m. They met this last month on March sixteenth, twenty-third, and thirtieth, as well as April sixth. Committee Chair Christina Durscharm made a presentation at the Reddick Town Council Meeting on Wednesday, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, about their proposed project for farm worker housing. For further information, detailed minutes of the EDC meetings are available on the Town of Reddick's website. Village of Reddick Communications Committee. The committee meets every Wednesday at one thirty p.m. in the Village Hall Conference Room. The mayor's newsletter went out to email inboxes on Wednesday, April sixth. We encourage anyone interested in receiving village updates to enroll online. You can subscribe by visiting reddickvillage.org/newsletter. A recent addition to the website is our Report Concerns Form. If you notice something that concerns you and you think the village should know, please fill us in. Community members can now fill out a simple form, which will send their concern directly to the appropriate department. The Report Concerns link is located on the village homepage directly underneath the Welcome banner. The Village of Reddick continues to look for ways to increase communication with the community, and we value public feedback. Also new is the village's revamped recycling calendar. In an attempt to reduce contamination fees, the committee has created an illustrated guide to more clearly communicate what is accepted in the village's dual-stream recycling. We have also implemented a color-coded system to quickly and visually communicate the alternating dual-stream recycling pickup schedule. In an attempt to reduce paper waste, we have combined all four quarters into an annual calendar and guide, which was mailed out with the latest village water bill. Community members may also pick up a printed guide and calendar at the village's clerk's office or download the PDFs from the village's website at their convenience.
I just need to interrupt. She says "we" quite a bit there, Mel Corca. It is actually Mel Corca who did all of that work. So if you appreciate the visual nature of this wonderful recycling calendar, it is entirely trustee Carval's work, so thank you very much.
I take credit for a lot of the things you did in the next paragraph, so. In the last year, the Communications Committee members, along with the clerk's office, have worked to reorganize and refresh the village website, including recreating their RHPD website, created and launched a monthly newsletter, published multiple new contact and feedback forms on the website, updated the phone system menu, streamlined the quarterly seasonal services update, launched a community bulletin board system on the village's homepage, implemented hybrid meetings, as well as many more communication improvements. We have many more goals on the horizon, and we encourage the public to submit any communication improvement ideas you would like to see the committee investigate.
You still did most of that.
Village of Reddick Hard Scrabble and Events Committee. The March Events Committee meeting reviewed preparations for the upcoming events, including the addition of treat bags for the bike rodeo participants, and ongoing meetings with the community organizations about their events planned for twenty twenty-two. Please note, last month, the committee report said that the town Earth Day Cleanup was scheduled for Saturday, April twenty-third. However, we have since learned that the town will be holding their annual event on Sunday, April twenty-fourth. Saturday will still be a day of volunteer activity in the village. Two groups of teens will be cleaning up debris and litter from the winter, and the village green will be planting spring trees. So please practice caution when driving through the village or town the weekend of the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth.
May I ask you a question real quick? Are we planning the Easter egg hunt or?
Not this year, no.
Okay, because I've heard some people ask about it, but, okay.
Yeah, we're really excited about the bike rodeo. We've been, we've been hoping for it this year, so that's where we're putting a lot of our, our eggs in that basket.
Next year, we would love to do that again.
And the bike rodeo, is that Hardscrabble Day?
No.
It's that Apple Blossom Day?
No, it's its own day.
It's its own day?
It's May twenty-first, it's a Saturday.
Okay, are we having an Apple Blossom Day?
Yes, the Apple Blossom Day is run by the Rotary, and it will be May seventh. It's the Saturday before Mother's Day.
Gotcha, okay. And the bike, I'll just check the calendar, thank you, sorry.
Bring your bike.
The Village of Reddick Human Relations Committee. The Human Relations Committee met on Thursday, April seventh, twenty twenty-two at seven p.m. Research for the Language Access Grant continues. The working group has been compiling translation and interpretation needs and categorizing them by type in order to estimate cost of each component. The RHPD, mayor, and I worked to produce a police reform report, which analyzes the police reform and reinvention collaborative plan goals a year from the plan's adoption on March eighth. The report is currently under review of the Human Relations Police Working Group and will be posted on the village's website as soon as they commence their feedback. And finally, the Reddick Public Library Report. The library placed a public bid notice on March twenty-first that closes at three p.m. on April twenty-second for the construction project to replace its roof. The project is funded in part by the Dutchess County Infrastructure Grant. Also this month, community members will start to see the library's learn, play, create grant money in redecoration of the village, of the children's library, including a paint job that will be taking place on April ninth through April fifteenth, and eventually some new furniture that's expected later this spring. And I can personally testify to it being painted, being that I have paint from painting it this afternoon, so.
All right. Thank you very much. And then we have trustee Dwar McNulty.
Right, so zoning and planning, March two thousand twenty-two, there were nine building permits issued, one certificate of occupancy, five certificates of compliance, and four municipal searches occurred. There were no orders to remedy, there were no stop-work orders, there was one court appearance, three fire inspections, and one complaint. Planning Board actions, they had a meeting, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two. They approved a sign for seven three eighty-five South Broadway for Albany Medical Extension. There's a one-year extension granted to a property located on Firehouse Lane. Signage was approved for forty-six West Market Street, Chickadee Studio and Supply LLC. There's a site plan for seven three nine two South Broadway, a site plan for three St. John Street, a site plan for forty-six West Market Street. The Planning Board meeting scheduled for April fourteenth has been changed to April nineteenth at five thirty p.m. at the Village Hall. And the site plan application and continuation for forty-six West Market Street has been tabled to May fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven p.m. at the Village Hall. The Zoning Board of Appeals, they met March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. There was an interpretation application for a property at sixty East Market Street, and that has been tabled until April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two for their meeting. And in all, the building department made two thousand four hundred ninety dollars in the month of March.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, nicely done. You survived your first committee report. Okay, going back to other business, I have two things. One, there were budget adjustments listed under regular business. We have quite a few that we need to make, but I am not prepared to present those to you tonight, so we will postpone that to our May meeting. And then the other that we talked about in our, in our workshop meeting, one for each of you, and that's for Mel Corca. This is an agreement between the Village of Reddick and Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority for the operation of a consecutive water system. This is related to the Traditions Water System. This is a, this is an agreement that the village agreed to over a year ago for the village to take care, basically to take care of the water sampling. Because there are so few residents in Traditions at this point, there's, there's not a lot of water use, and so it made sense on both sides to have the village just take care of the, the reports that are required. And the Dutchess County Wastewater Authority has, has requested that we renew this agreement for another year, and so I, it is not costing the village any extra. We are doing these reports anyway, so they just admit we do not have to do any additional testing on their behalf, because it's incorporated in the testing that we do already. So I would like to make a motion that we, or I guess I'm asking for a motion to, give me the authority to sign this contract to extend this agreement for one more year. Thank you, second? Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Super. That is passed, okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
You may.
On your agenda?
Yes, sir.
When is our workshop meeting aired Wednesday?
Ah, well, we just approved that they would go to the fourth Wednesday, so we are going to move the workshop meeting, it will not be April twenty-first, it will be April Thank you for clarifying. Any other questions, any other business before we go into executive session? And public comment, if there's any public comment. Yes, please, come on up. If you'd just state your name for us and grab the microphone.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lori Urban, I'm a resident of the Village of Reddick, but I'm coming here tonight to speak to you as a member of the Town Conservation Advisory Council. And I want to tell you of an exciting new program we're going to be offering at the Town Recycle Yard. It's going to be a food waste recycling, system isn't the right word, but a food waste recycling area with bins where people can bring their food waste. And we think that this is an important new service that's going to be offered by the town. By putting your food waste into the composted, you're doing a couple of very important things. You are diverting food waste from going. You are diverting food waste from going to the landfill. And you may be surprised to know that over 25% of what goes to the landfill is food waste, so that's a very large portion. When it goes to the landfill, it generates methane, which is a powerful greenhouse gas. So by having the food waste composted by the town, that negative effect is bypassed because instead of going to landfill, generating methane, it's going to be composted. The compost that is going to be made is going to be done by the Ulster County Resource Recovery Agency. And the compost actually creates very fertile new soil that is, you know, a positive thing for planting and reduces the need for artificial fertilizer. Awesome. When does it start? April 30th. The right time from when the recycle yard is open, so 8:00 to 1:00 on Saturdays and I think the same timeframe on Wednesdays. And just the last thing, if you're wondering what can be recycled as food waste, virtually anything. Unlike a home garden, which avoids meat products, this actually, because this is an industrial facility, you can put actually animal scraps in there too, your bones, your chicken skin, in addition to the low-hanging fruit of your banana peels and your coffee grounds. So really, there's almost anything that you can imagine as a food waste can go. So just, we're encouraging residents to bring it to the town. And they'll be well signed as to where the bins are located, and you'll be helping out with a very important service of making that material into something really valuable. So I wanted to let you know about that. And I also have a little comment about your newest member of the board. So it's very, very exciting to see Declan here.
Hey, Lori.
I've known Declan since he was little. Our families are acquainted and think he's an absolutely awesome addition to the board. You guys are making great hires and elections. It's really wonderful. And I think you'll add a wonderful, meaningful perspective.
Thanks, Lori.
Okay, thank you very much for letting me see.
Is there any fee associated or permits required for that?
I'm so glad you asked, Brett, because the answer is none whatsoever. You just put that in your car when you're headed to the recycle yard with your newspaper and everything else you're bringing. No, no fee.
Oh, and not that I think it would be a large portion of food scraps, but they're not taking like compostable bags, right? And those sort of more processed paper products.
Thank you, Declan. So no paper, no plastic. Keep it very simple in your mind. You know, if you're bringing it, just bring it in some kind of a container that you can dump it into the bin.
And no like biodegradable, like dog poop bags? They're not like that kind of cornstarch-based or corn, like bio polymers?
Right, because there are lots of things that say, oh, this is compostable, or like the cups that you might get or take out and that kind of thing.
Oh, like the Keurig cups? Yeah, the like compostable Keurig cups. As an anti example.
Right, as an anti example. I'm going to say keep it very simple. If it's plastic or paper, don't put it in. Food scraps, and we appreciate every once in a while.
Just another question, the Ulster County Resource Recovery Center, do they sell the resulting compost?
So that's a question I hoped I wouldn't be asked because I should know, but I do not know.
I think it's possible that they do.
I'm pretty sure they do until supplies run out.
Yeah, and I, one just has to go there and get it in time.
First comes the first served, yeah.
Well, we can look that up as well. Lori, thank you very much. I appreciate the highlight of this exciting new program. And I believe it is already on our, on our Facebook, on our website.
Your mayor's note put it out electronically, and I appreciate that very much. So people who are looking at the mayor's news have seen that flyer, and there's some more information there.
I do have one question. Are you weighing the food scraps that you're getting?
So the vendor who's going to be taking the food scraps is going to keep track of how much
Just to carry out, you know.
is being recycled, and we're going to have those statistics to review. It's a pilot program that goes from the last day of April through October. So that's another important reason for people to participate if you're interested in this type of service and make this a very big success, where a lot of people, you know, bring their stuff.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, village.
And before we go on, we need to have a motion to pay our bills after audit. Thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, any other business that we need to attend to in our public meeting? Hearing none. I'm, we are going to adjourn this meeting to go into executive session. We will adjourn when we come out of executive session. We may actually have some business after executive session. So a motion to go into executive session? Thank you, second? Thank you, all in favor? Okay, we're going to go upstairs to the conference room for executive. We're going into executive session to discuss police personnel business. And we will be back. Okay, so we need to, can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting? Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you very much, all in favor? Perfect. We have Charlie Lang on the phone. So we've come back into session to, I'd like to make a motion to promote Kyle Kolletzky. Pretty sure that's close.
Oh, we learned the trick on this one.
Well, Jetzky is, he's referred to, so it's Koljetzky. There you go. Apologies for butchering his name. To promote him from part-time to full-time to fill the current open fourth full-time spot in the police department. May I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Aye.
Thank you, Declan. Any further, any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, that's unanimous. And is there any other business? Hearing none, I would like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
Thank you very much, deputy mayor. A second, please.
Second.
Okay, we got a lot of seconds, love it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much for a jam-packed meeting of good stuff.